President, our Father, we say we will let us open our eyes tomorrow and see another day. We ask dear Lord, that you would be with all the sick, be with the ones in the hospital, in the nursing homes, Lord, be with our troops. And dear Lord, we pray that this meeting be done according to our will. And that's our will, we bow in our name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Logan, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it sustains one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item, number two, is reading and approval of meetings from our last meeting.
I make a motion, they do accept it as written.
Second. Can we move in second? Any discussion? All over the paper, please raise your hand. Item three is old business. We have none. Item four is new business. We have three rezoned requests tonight. The first one is RZ1-90012. I want to announce that we're going to open up for a formal public hearing and what to ask Justin, what the county's recommendations for this rezoning request.
Yes, sir. This is a 32.72 acre tract of property. It's on Bramble Way in Ball Ground, Georgia. Current use of the property is agricultural. Mr. Logan, who is here tonight, is asking to lease on the property neighborhood commercial. It's for a faith and family oriented event facility. There's a couple of different options that we would give you on this, though. Staffordwood, one is the neighborhood commercial. The other one is a leave it agricultural and recommend a conditional use for the property for a faith based business. That's also appropriate and actually I believe it's a little more appropriate given the surrounding nature of the property.
Would that not be up to the applicant to decide that?
Yes, sir.
So, your recommendation is?
For the neighborhood commercial, but I wanted to also give y'all the opportunity so y'all would know that a conditional use in agricultural is also appropriate for what he's requesting. So, it's allowed in both.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is Mr. Logan here?
Yeah, right here.
Is there anything that you'd like to comment on or add?
Yes, please. Now?
Yes, sir.
The first thing, I appreciate everybody's time and everybody that came related to us. In regards to the neighborhood commercial, I started out, my wife and I bought the land in May of 18. You guys have our business plan, I think, and for others that don't, hopefully you may have stopped by and pulled one of our information sheets. We left one out so people could get a sense of what we're trying to do. And so, we originally bought the land, I think we may personally reside there at a point, but in particular, we bought it sort of to be this sort of missional purpose. And so, I had started visiting with Mr. Buckingham before he left in regards to what our plans were. And he was really the one that steered us towards this application, say neighborhood commercial. So, frankly, we're not, that's not our request per se, is to be able to potentially do this. So, if the other method is equally acceptable in terms of outcome, we're totally fine. We don't intend to be running businesses and, you know, aside from this effort we're talking about. And so, whichever way, you know, you all may wish to go is certainly fine by us. I was taking his guidance at this stage. So, in terms of the facility itself and the purpose, you know, we're seeking obviously the ability to do this. We intend to make it a missional type of a business as well as continue to be agricultural. And so, as you guys all saw in the, in the plan, my wife and I are both intending to, you know, acquire this so that we can create and manage a high quality special place where faith and family oriented activities can be hosted in sort of the southeastern corner of this quadrant. We've lived in the area for a long while and this is very close to Gift Gardens for those of you that don't know. We are literally the corner of the property, of the county. So, eastern property is Dawson, the southern property is Cherokee, and then the northern property is Mr. Bellin's here, and then the western property, we actually technically own, you know, the 32 acres. And then beside that is four or five individual homes, at least one of which is here tonight I've met. And so, as we've indicated, the focus is going to try to become a unique place for not only community activities, both faith and non faith oriented, but really a place where, I can give a few examples for everybody, but we are very, very seriously intent on continuing the rural nature. We certainly don't want development in that area. You know, we're going to probably have hopefully more cows and people on the land at any one time, but some of the illustrations just for everybody of the kinds of things we're talking about. And my wife is a nurse and practitioner for 30 some years. I've been in banking, but also as a firefighter, EMT, and search and rescue Cherokee County for, since 2001. And so, we kind of have a special heart for public servants like that. And so, one of the things we see with young people is they just don't have a place to have, you know, certain types of event showers and things like that. Nonprofits don't really have a nice place to go. Youth groups don't have a place to go. Foster family days, you know, are the kind of thing we're talking about, being able to host on a kind of picnic, Special Olympics kind of thing. So, we don't really have an exact design. We just sort of feel called to build the place, make it available, and see what sorts of nonprofit community faith oriented activities, you know, may want to use the place in order to help generate, you know, funding for themselves. And then we could end up hosting activities as fundraisers for some of the nonprofits that we support. Particularly my wife, because it's a family history, has a passion for women at risk and youth at risk. And so, we can see maybe doing things there as well as getting around first responders, teachers, nurses, you know, people that are community servers. So, that's sort of some illustrations of the kind of thing we're talking about. You know, as I said in the plan, we clearly recognize that we intend to be really good neighbors. We actually intend to build this in a way that not only is certainly way better than what was there before, and most everybody that is from that area has stopped and told us how glad they are that it's not what it was. And, you know, of course, we wouldn't have bought and kept it that way if that was required. But, in any case, we certainly intend to honor, you know, everything around, like ending at a decent hour, not having a lot of traffic activity, you know, there's easy access in and out. Certainly, we're going to work with the county in terms of ingress, egress, again, being first responder, I clearly get, you know, having driven ambulances in all kinds of places and fire trucks. So, we already have that pretty well set up with looping roads and things on there because of other amenities. And so, that's kind of the highlight and hopefully don't have any questions. And if I need to cover another area, we've never done this before, so tell me if I missed some part. Okay, thank you.
I did have some questions, I don't have time for them.
I'm sorry, sir. We get into, did you sign up? Sign in for us. Okay, we'll, I'm getting that out. Mr. Logan, again, I think the reason I'm not speaking for Rodney, and please y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but special event facilities that was brought to our attention, well, it's been, had been brought to our attention for the last several years. And I think more than likely, I might speak to Rodney, but I would assume that the reason he suggested going to act, I mean, to neighborhood commercial was because that it would be revenue generating and so forth.
Enough to at least keep leasing it out or what have you.
So, I would assume that's why he suggested that.
I know he said there has been either with this group or the full commission, I guess there was an onslaught of some special use permit requests at some point a year or two ago, and that maybe you guys have kind of got tired of hearing that or something too. So, I'm not really sure what all went into, but again, for us, I don't really know the difference. We have a little concern about what's going to happen to the taxes. If we're not really intending it to be a sawmill or, you know, whatever might be sitting out there in the middle of countryside. So, whatever is kind of the easiest to get done and kind of the least disruptive, both to the county and to, for us, is certainly fine. I don't know the difference either way, I guess, so I have to rely on, you know, the director and you all.
I'll just let you know that may have been a while, Rodney recommended that.
There was actually a couple of other options on this chart he gave me, and so unfortunately he's not here to tell us.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Logan, how many, how many folks would you anticipate being using the property in one time?
So, as we wrote in there, we're going to work with the county fire marshal and, you know, the safety side, because again, for us, his mission kind of, his passion is sort of build, kind of build a neighborhood commerce source, but we're going to try to pay for this out of pocket. And so, if we, I guess the short answer is what we wrote in there, we're thinking we'd like to be able to have inside as many as 150 to potentially 200. But if they tell us frankly that, you know, if you get over 125, you gotta go add another 300,000 of expense, we would rather build in the way that we can do it rather than get ourselves in a situation where we aren't comfortable. So, I would say all things equal, if we had our pick, we would build it to where it could exceed 150 to 200. But that's frankly subject to cost and, and building permit and coding process.
And what would your hours of operation be, what would you envision?
Well, we're thinking a lot of the activities will be done during the days. The ones that will be at night is again, as we indicated in there, recognizing that people do live around us and we're intending to live there too. We intend to have any kind of outside noise making done by 10:00, and then pretty much every event over by 11:00 on the weekend, Friday, Saturday. Other than that, it's going to be a lot of, you know, daytime type of activities, which we would expect. And maybe some early evening, you know, host a dinner for the ladies' auxiliary, you know, things like that.
Are you going to personally operate the place or be there when these functions are going on, or is it going to be leased out?
No, 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 we're not leasing it. This is our money. This is not being leased. No, my, my wife has had a passion for doing something like this. She's kind of choosing to come to the end of her medical career pretty soon, so this is going to really kind of be some of her thing. I intend to stop being a banker for a second time here, and maybe not very long from now, depending on how this goes. So, we're going to basically own and operate it. We will, we will create some jobs in the, in the community, though, because there's only so much that we can do. We don't want to become prisoners to this. But, no, this is going to have our, our name and hand all through it.
So, as a neighborhood commercial designation, what, what does that allow and not allow Mr. Logan to do forward?
Neighborhood commercial is much more permissive. And the zoning rights, and I'd like to refer to the attorney on this one, but conditional use would go with this request. If we rezoned the property, it's that zoning until...
Right, I understood.
Yes, sir. So, if he were no longer there, somebody could do any of the uses in neighborhood commercial. But what he's requesting fits in either of those two categories that I gave you earlier, either the conditional use in agricultural or neighborhood commercial. It's, that use is allowed.
I have, I have the chart. He's probably looking for it as well, the ones that Rodney gave me. If you'd like me to read a few of the other things, okay.
Bill, any thoughts?
First, the thoughts. He's planning on keeping cows and keeping agricultural operation there. I think just on suggestion of conditional use, sounds reasonable.
So, keeping it as agricultural and using it commercial?
Additional use, yeah.
But then again, that conditional use will follow it to other people down the road just as well as the commercial.
If they continue, if they continue that same use, they would not allow them to put a gas station there, for example.
Which clearly is not our intention. Not, whatever it's worth, again, we're finding the way, but we're actually set about 2,300 feet off the road. So, we own a 65 strip all the way back. It's about three acres and then it gets into the 66. So, we, you know, we have road access and we don't have road frontage like that. So, whatever that's, say, we're, we're pretty well pocketed by us.
So, did he have his cows on neighborhood commercial?
If he was operating it as a business? Yes, sir.
You mean the cows as a business as opposed to just free roaming? So, he's going to milk the cows or harvest the cows?
Yes, sir.
I mean, most people just don't keep cows as a pet.
Yeah.
They eat too much.
Are you going to help through services there or?
We're not going to have commercial kitchen. We would have sort of the caterers type of a setup, which would just be warming and things like that. But no, no fryers, no, no commercial kitchen.
Any other questions or comments?
Is that appropriate?
I'm talking to the board. I'll, I'll get to the publics here in just a moment. Is there any other question or comments from Mr. Logan? We have two people that would like to speak out or speak on this. The first one is Mr. Kevin Brooks. If you would please state, state your address, please.
All right. I'm Kevin Brooks. I live at 505 112. I've, I've lived on this place for over 30 years now. I moved there because it is a rural area. I'm assuming this is the same property where the pit there used to be, rural, but waking up in a lot of noise and a lot of traffic and a lot of whatever, I don't know how, what kind of zoning that requires, but obviously not, I guess. You know, I'm not sure what kind of facility you're planning to build here, but when I hear a number of like 150 to 200 people, to me, that's a pretty big operation. And you've got little country roads out there, you know, and they don't have big city streets up there. And so, there could be a lot of traffic, a lot of congestion, and I have a problem with that. And I'm not strictly against the type of things he wants to do, but I'm, I'm against the, the traffic congestion and all the things that's going to come with it. And then the other thing I wanted to mention too was, how is all the other property adjoining this property zone?
If I remember correctly, looking at the, I did through all the paperwork here, but a lot of it is rural residential agriculture. It's rural residential agriculture.
And I personally have sat where this gentleman sits, and I tried to get some property in Picking's County rezoned for business at one point. And I was told pretty much that to get property rezoned, you've got to have adjoining property that's pretty much the same type of zoning. And neighborhood commercial is pretty far out when you're talking about rural residential and agriculture. You know, it's a big change to actually produce something like that.
Most of the ways we have the area, I mean, there's nothing written in stone saying you can't do it if you're this or that. I mean, that's where you have the area.
Right, I got read in the paper too, where the copy, somebody here talked about zoning in Picking's County, and that was one of the things I've read before, is, you know, trying to keep the zoning, similar zonings together, you know. And, you know, something like this, if you're doing it as an neighborhood commercial, you're hoping in here up to whatever, you know, in the future. And I just don't say that as a...
So, you would favor a conditional use in retaining the agricultural versus the...
I mean, that would be the preference over the other, but still, we're talking the kind of numbers that we're talking here. I mean, I don't know that the area can handle that kind of, you know, people coming and going all the time. And it's going to be a lot of noise, you know, if there's a lot of outside activities. It's just kind of out of line of currently what's in, in our area.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Okay, we have one other. We have Mrs. Helen Heinlein.
Yes, sir.
Please state your address, please, my address, please.
934 Kevin Brooks Road. I'm about a mile and a half from the property mall. And I too have lived in the area for 30 years and would ask that you respect the rural agricultural nature of our area. That too is why I moved out there. I raise horses and chickens and ducks and, you know, I'm not opposed, again, as Mr. Brooks. I think the stated purpose is good to be able to provide a nice place for young people to come and have activities in the rural. I'm certainly not against someone doing something like that, but if there's a preference, I would respectfully ask that you keep it zoned for agriculture. And if you do decide to, okay, this project, do it with leaving it agricultural and giving them the variance. So, thank you very much.
Miss Heinlein?
Yes, sir. I had signed the paper too, I got 450 foot backed up right to this feller's land that he's fixing to do this on. My name is David Thompson.
Is there a folder?
He's signed on, I mentioned, he didn't, but he got here before.
Oh, okay, Mr. Thompson. Go ahead, man.
Yeah, I moved up here, I was tied in coat, hopefully two years ago. I left Sonora because they bought the walking bed in there, and that place has blowed up. Before that, I lived in Fayette County on 5, and I built a strip mall between 314 and 85 Highway.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
And it didn't blow up, so I just kept going further. So, I bought this place, two and a half acres. My fence, he was looking at the map, is right at this thing. Now, my house is probably here to the street to the fence, and then it's going to turn into these wheat fields that this is. And it's like he's saying, 150 to 200 people. About urinate, I might take them off and hang here, but again, I can't, I can't believe this has run up under me for a third time. I would, and then it's like down the road. If this feller stays 15 minutes and says that is even going to be okay to build a Walmart or a gas station there, and then, you know, and then you're talking about young people probably coming in there. And there's probably a lot of good young people, but there's probably a lot of bad ones too. And being that close to the house, like I say, my fence and his property is touching. I walk back there sometimes and have looked, because there's deer stands there now and coyotes and a bear and all that. If this comes in here, again, there's no way you're going to be able to come up in little two lane roads with 150 to 200 people plus catering services and everything else. And then he's saying maybe 10 or 11 a night. Now, the race track that they had, the dirt truck stuff was gone before I moved there. I've only been there September this year. This September will be two years. And I don't, I don't know. Like I say, this, if this has ever changed from what it is now, the agriculture and goes partial commercial, then five years from now, it's going to be full commercial and have some sort of great big business. This feller's done moved to Oklahoma or somewhere and ain't there no more. I mean, there's, this is opening the door.
Yes.
To down the road. If he doesn't decide to stay, or even if he does, 150 to 200 people from here, two or three times from the street out there, I'll be taking my urinate out. Especially, you know, and I know people play up past 10 o'clock at night, but I'm not one of them.
I'm not very often a service.
I work down here at Tate as a head start, I cause my grandson's there, so I'm, I'm at that schoolhouse every day at 7:00 till 4:00 till he's out and made. But I don't, I don't know. When I walk back there, all I see is wheat fields, and that's pretty nice. And like I say, since 1990, when I left Falls Park, after 25 years, got a big japs of it, house broke in two, three times, I moved to Fayette County. It starts getting broken when that big mall comes in there. It changed everything. And then when I moved to Sonora for 17 years until July, September, when I moved up here, it's done changed down there. And the neighborhood, I used to go to Maine or somewhere racing motorcycles and leave my garage door open. Nobody would come in, but that started changing. And when you start bringing too many people in, and like I say, I'm looking down the road too. That's, you know, it could turn into something else. Because once you rezonate, it's probably not going to come back to being agriculture. It's probably going to go to full commercial or no telling what. But even with 150 to 200 people, there's little bitty roads going in there and nothing to figure. And I know things have to change, but wait till I'm dead and then it's out.
Well, let's hope that's a world problem.
Stay away from the virus.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I, like I say, and I hope that don't offend this feller, but I'm just, I've moved there and I'm at the end of the gravel road. I mean, it's, it's country there.
So, of the two options, you would more favor the retaining the agricultural and a conditional use, if those were the two options?
Yeah, I just, I just don't want a big business behind my house.
I understand that, yeah.
I mean, and with 150 to 200 people, and it can be an activity center for Christian folks, and that's fine, but you've still got 150 or 200 people there making racket cars. Eventually, are they going to build a parking lot up next to my fence or another, another building or something that's going to even increase the problem? I tell you the truth, I've done talk to two real estate agents, because they're going to tell me if I can get 15 cents from my house, I can buy another place for 15 cents, maybe in the middle of a swamp somewhere.
Mr. Logan?
Yeah, I was just going to interject. We own 32 acres, 33 acres that actually were our properties of us, so the zoning on this request is actually with the 33 acre, just to be technically correct. We own both parcels where we do this, Mr. Thompson. See, that's up to our fence line on the second parcel that is not this one, just to be technically.
I think what we were all saying is we prefer option three, which is to keep things as they are and not opening up to all of this.
The spot zoning sets a very bad precedent, you know, and it's a real destroyer.
You've had your three minutes, okay. Any questions for the board?
So, they raised the issue of the roads. Have we evaluated the road issue?
So, that would be taken care of at the land development phase, so if they decided to put the thing out of business license and came in and put like commercial grade structure in there, they would be required to approve different things.
Okay, well, some of the road though is county road, right?
Yes, I believe.
Yeah. Were there objections? Is, is the county road adequate? And is, is inside roads the issue? I, it seemed that the, what was the suggestion was that the county roads may be inadequate. I know he's going to have adequate roads inside his place there.
So, it would be something that our land development officer and I would take a look at, probably along with the roads department, and see, and there may be some improvements required.
Can I just, real quick on that? So, when you exit our property, you turn right, within about 1,500 feet, you're out of the county. And then when you come out of the property, you turn left, the road immediately splits, both of which within about a mile end up at Yellow Creek Road, which of course has a ton of traffic every day. And then from the Love Lady end of the intersection where that little fire station, yellow little fire station, up to 53 is about another mile, mile and a quarter, in which case you go left, right, cove road. So, that's the roadways that are there that are...
All the traffic to the, the place that used to be there came down Love Lady Road, because I sat there and watched them come and go. Because it's a straight shot of what's in Love Lady into there, and Love Lady's not really set up to handle, not many people coming and going.
How many, I never went to one of them, thankfully. How many people used to go to those, I mean, you?
I haven't went to one either, but I heard the cars and trucks coming out.
A lot of cars, not really.
Yeah. I mean, not every day, but I would...
No, no, okay, this is, this needs to be directed to us and we'll respond back. So, any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Logan, you talked about youth groups and youth activities, but are you also going to be doing weddings and corporate retreats and things like that?
Some, some corporate retreats, I guess... Some corporate retreats, I guess, some public safety-type training days, things like that. Would we do weddings, I suppose, potentially? There might be some events in the long run, but that's not our goal.
Your plan that you gave us here is that you're going to have outside, outdoor concerts?
Just as one potential scenario. Just as an example, like, the church we went to for a long time, they would do the end-of-the-school-year youth group kind of craze thing, where they'd bring the kids out and let them, you know, had a band play for a little while. And they'd do the beginning-of-the-year one. So that might be an illustration. But I would assume that requires a permit to have an event like that. Because I know if, like, in Cherokee, if you do that, you have to have, you know, the fire department, you have to have all this other. But that's not our, we, yeah, that's not our plan is to be a concert venue.
What's his activities outside? You also, in the future, you plan on building additional buildings. What would those buildings be?
The only one right now we have in mind is if we end up having, let's say that we were hosting... I played in the band when I was really, really young. And we played for the mentally handicapped citizens of the county. And they had a dinner, and then we did a dance for them. So if at a point, this is just an illustration, if we had a dinner for them, and the weather wasn't good where we could put it outside, eventually, we would like to have a place where we kind of have a place to be covered. So like, you know, where you could have your dance hall set up, but then have a place maybe for the dinner over there. So it would be kind of a weather protection thing as a...
So you don't plan on using the barn that you're building for inside activities?
No, no, that's exactly what it would be. But I'm saying, if, in that case, if the barn was set up for the dance, then we couldn't let them do dinner there. So the idea is there might be like a covered pavilion kind of a thing, so that people could be out in the rain if the barn itself is already kind of committed to the event that night, for that day.
Any other questions?
Just please sit and try and think. If you have a plan going, whether it be religious or low in stone, that racket's going to carry a lot. 150 people, if they all come in and into a car, and they say, "I'll get in one small car", there's going to be a lot of traffic coming over to that place. I would please look down at what is at this. Like I say, I'm related to...
Public comments were done, public comments.
Yes, okay.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Logan? Phil, is there any issue here? The application was for the neighborhood commercial.
He consented to it in his, in his report. So if you pull one out, I think you may go on if that's the last check.
Do I hear a motion to the board, or do we want discussion?
Well, if the public citizen's just actually requesting the commercial of doing the other without having it in writing, but...
Phil said it's acceptable to him, but it's okay.
Chairman, could we also make a motion to include the staff report and documents along with the video as part of the record?
Absolutely.
And perhaps consider a condition of some kind of a time that would be available to y'all, if y'all would like to make a recommendation for that? Or some kind of timeframe, like, for noise, for outdoor activities or something like that?
Yes, I think the rule is probably a little late. So I would like to see it more later than 10:00 in the morning to bring that one around.
Well, I'll make a motion to continue the property as agricultural with a conditional use for the stated purpose, with hours being limited to 10 p.m. Of all activities? All activities. So we have a motion, go ahead and hear it, second.
That would be all commercial activities.
Pardon?
That would be all commercial activities.
Right, all commercial activity has to end at 10 o'clock. One second. We have a move in a second to keep the property in question in agriculture with a special use permit for all commercial activity to end by 10 o'clock in the evening. Any discussion?
I'm not looking at the outdoor concerts. The outdoor concerts, that's going to be a tremendous noise for that neighborhood. I don't think you need any of those, especially in the evening hours. I wouldn't want to remind anybody.
So are you proposing that as an amendment?
That we, yes, that we eliminate outdoor concerts.
We're having to propose amendment to the motion to limit or restrict, I should say, outdoor concerts.
It's basically the conditional use permit that does not allow, that goes along the lines of this business plan, you'll probably need to define that, but does not allow outdoor concerts.
And all commercial activity in...
All commercial activity ceases to occur.
Morning, Mr. Yenko. Any further discussion? I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? This hearing is closed. The next item on the agenda is another rezon request on now open a public hearing for RZ-190014. And I'd ask, just to what the county recommendation is for that? Rezon, please.
Yes, sir. This is a rezon request for a 2.91 acre tract of property on Matthews Road and Jasper Road. The property is agricultural right now. They're asking to change the property to rural residential. Staff recommends that approval for the request.
Is Mr. Bryant here?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Is there anything you'd like to add, sir?
We're just looking to change that over, just so we can build a house and be close to our family here, whether he wants to object or not. Take your thunder away, real quick. No, but, no, seriousness, we're just looking to build a house, a garage, and just to be close to family, that area.
I ask you to go up to your brother-in-law.
Brother-in-law.
Oh, okay.
He married my twin sister. So we would live across the street from my twin sister and my brother-in-law, my nephew who got dragged here, and Greg and Kenny Alton, are the homeowners that are selling us this parcel of land.
Do you have cows?
No, no, sir. I'm just going to say from the...
Are they here to support you, or are they...
I don't know, what do you...
Are there any questions from Mr. Min Bryant, regarding the proposal? We have nobody that has wanted to speak for or against. So I assume your brother-in-law is okay with it. Not to put words in your mouth. Is there any questions from the board? Chairman, a move that the rezon request be approved as presented? We have a move in second to accept a rezon request as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Could we also make this a part of the record along with the due?
Yes, of course. Thank you. Technically, um, and exactly, important technical detail. Thank you for listening. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries on. That hearing is closed. The next is rezon request, RZ-190014. I'd like to announce a public hearing for this rezon request is open. And just what's the county recommendation for this?
This is approval as well, sir. This is a two-acre tract on Highway 53 West. It's currently zoned highway business, and they would like to rezonate the property to rural residential for a home.
In the future.
In the future.
And if, may I go ahead and ask, could we include this as part of the record as well as the following?
Thank you, sir.
Is Miss Laura Jones here?
Yes, sir.
Is that your lot died, or...
No, we just want it out commercial and then the residential. Probably we would either downsize and build there, or our grandson would get the property.
Thank you.
But not in your future.
Is there any questions for the county or Mrs. Jones? Oh, and by the way, there's nobody that signed up to speak on this rezon request. I move to accept the recommendation of the county department for this rezoning request. We have a move in second to accept the rezon request as stated. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That hearing is closed. Item five on our agenda is board comments. I thank everyone for coming out and sharing their opinions and brought to me these important actors. So thank you for that. Absolutely. Any other board comments? The item six is public comments. Has anybody want to say anything in the public, please? If not, again, thank you for your time and coming out. Item seven is adjournment. Do you hear a motion to adjourn?
So when?
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming out.